This conference will now be recorded.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello.
The time is now 7:30. We've started. This is the 11/20 work session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining via video.
How about now?
We ask that you please mute your phones at this time so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There will be several opportunities for the public to be heard tonight, and we will advise you at the appropriate times. The first is the Open Public Meetings Act announcement. Michelle, if you could please read that.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger.
Great, thank you very much. Michelle, if you can please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Homan?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Strouch?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here. Thank you, Michelle. Public comment, this is the first of three opportunities tonight for the public to comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please state your name and address for the record. You will have a five-minute time limit to address the governing body. Anyone wish to be heard? Not hearing or seeing anyone, I'll close the meeting to the public for this section in the work session. Administration, we will now move to the administration part of the work session, and we will start with the attendee. We will be approving the May 14th work and regular session minutes that are listed for approval. Who was in attendance? Everyone is eligible to vote. Just parenthetically, the May 28th meeting minutes will be listed on our next agenda. Next ordinance, adoption of ordinance. Ordinance 20-10, an ordinance establishing Chapter 181 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale, entitled Short Term Rentals is being set for a public hearing and second reading tonight. This ordinance prohibits rental of any dwellings for 30 days or less. Councilman Sasso, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, so this is obviously second reading. So last meeting, we talked about it a little bit. This was bouncing around the Land Use Committee for quite some time. It's something that a number of different communities have adopted, including Ridgewood and others in the area. And it's what I like to call a quality of life issue, but it also straddles public safety. So in our community, we are a community of largely families and working professionals. And this is not a problem that I know of right now, but we're not going to wait till it's a problem. And that's it?
Thank you. Okay. That's not on my agenda. Okay, thank you. We just had a question with Attorney Ray Wiss about something that's on the agenda, so thank you for that. Next is the ordinance 20-11. Ordinance of the Borough of Allendale, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, amending the redevelopment plan for certain properties situated along West Crescent Avenue. Amy, would you like to speak to that? I can't hear you.
Sorry. You know, there's a ton of stuff going on in the market. It is amplified by COVID-19. A lot of it is caused by COVID-19. So we recently met with the chairman of our redevelopment firm, Hampshire, and we're very happy to say that we are moving forward, but the plan is going to be amended slightly. The amended plan will call for 10 more units. The back building will actually remain a warehouse, but keep in mind that we're very cognizant of the truck traffic, which is the reason we did the redevelopment plan. We made sure that our ordinance were intact, and there's no freight forwarding type of businesses in there, which is actually what's hot right now on the market. So the building will be rented out to two or three tenants, and we're just all very, very pleased that we were able to keep this development going, and despite the challenging market conditions. So we're very happy to say that we're moving forward, and we got this on the agenda today.
Great, thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
I skipped something that was not on my agenda, but it might have been on your, collectively everyone's agenda. Grant application, Resolution 20-141. Authorized submission of Bergen County Open Space Trust Fund Memorial Municipal Program Park Improvement Application, Crestwood Park Trail Circuit Improvement Project.
This is just the formality that we have now with the Bergen County Open Space Grants that we've been putting in for almost 10 years now. We went and put our letter of intent in at a couple council meetings. So this is actually the public comment. It was in the paper. It was advertised. What we plan on doing, if everything works out next year, of course, everything's still up in the air, but there is a series of trails that are all throughout Crestwood Lake, and we'd like to help make those a little bit more clear, clear them out a little bit more, and make them more amendable for everybody to use.
Great, thank you, Amy. And sorry that I missed going through.
That's, yeah, okay, that's fine.
Right, yeah, it just wasn't on my copy. So tonight we'll be holding our public hearing for that, so thank you for that.
I apologize, Mayor, that was my mistake.
Michelle, it's not like you had anything else to do tonight. Okay. Consent agenda. We have a very full consent agenda tonight, but I will briefly go through it during our work session. 20-142, approve the bill list. I've gone over it. It looked fine. I'm not sure whether Amy's gone over it.
Yes, it looks fine.
Good, and I know Councilman O'Toole, they go over it as well. 20-143, amend 2020 Crestwood Lake fees. We are happy to announce that we have extended the early registration rates at Crestwood Lake for Allendale residents through June 20th. You can go onto allendalenj.gov to register. Amy, do you want to comment on that?
No, we're just happy to be able to offer those early bird rates to Allendale residents only through June 20th. Let me open up the lake.
Great, thank you. Next, 20-144, approve the adjustment 2020 Crestwood Lake membership. There's a resolution that approves a financial hardship lake membership for this season. Next, 20-145, authorize refunds, 2020 Crestwood Lake membership overpayments. There were a few glitches in the system which resulted in several members overpaying. So this authorization, resolution authorizes refunds for amounts that they were overcharged. So just some banking matters to return, to refund the overpayment. 20-146, authorize 2020 salaries supplement number one, Crestwood Lake Swim Club. Tonight, we're hiring additional staff and substitutes that will be needed for the lake. Thank you especially to Amy, who's worked tirelessly on this, and Lake Manager Tom Viscardi for making this season happen. We are looking forward to it. Next, 20-147, endorse New Jersey Division of Alcohol Beverage Control COVID-19, expansion of premises, temporary permits for the Allendale Bar and Grill, Friends and Family LLC and Savini Restaurant. The State of New Jersey is allowing establishments such as bars and restaurants with liquor license to temporarily extend the premises where they can serve alcohol. And through November 30th, they will be permitted to serve outdoors. The restaurant businesses have been tremendously affected by the pandemic, and we wholeheartedly endorse the applications of the AB&amp;G Restaurant L and Savini's, and wish them all the best. Section, next, 20-148, appoint hourly seasonal DPW employee Brian O'Connor. Brian O'Connor did a great job for us last year, and we are-
Certainly did.
Yes, absolutely. We're happy to have him back working in the DPW this summer. Ron, do you want to comment on that?
No, I agree with both of you and Councilwoman Wilsinski just said.
Yes, great, we're looking forward to it.
We have to buy him pizza. He loves pizza.
Yep, we're happy to have him back.
I met Brian today, actually. He was out, I was out walking, and he was working with Rich McDowell, and I chatted them up for a couple minutes.
Right, no, good.
I'm not long, because I didn't want Ben to get in trouble with Ron, but we had a quick chat.
We're all happy to have him back. Next is 20-149, authorize extension of the park and ride fees through August 30th, 2020. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Public Safety Committee is recommending extending the current rates and parking permits for the train station through August 31st. Thank you to the Allendale Police Department for their work on this. Next is 20-150, authorize agreement, administration of a licensed group home for development, developmentally disabled for affordable housing credit. 20 West Crescent Avenue Eastern Christian Children's Retreat. Ray, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, if I might, Mayor, there's three related resolutions, that being 20-150, 20-151, and I believe the renumbered, what was formerly Letter R, 20-158. I believe that's going to be numbered now. All are related, as you just mentioned, to 200 West Crescent Avenue, and that is the group home. The first of those three, 20-150, is the agreement by which Eastern Christian agrees to administer that group home at 200 West Crescent as a home for the developmentally disabled pursuant to the applicable state resolutions. The next one, 20-151, is the agreement by which the borough had agreed as part of the construction of the group home to contribute $50,000 towards its construction. So this authorizes the release of those funds to do that, right? And the last one is the deed restriction by which, when recorded with the county clerk, the home at 200 West Crescent will be operated for a minimum of 30 years as a group home.
Great, thank you. Thank you for speaking to those. So that's 20-150, 20-151, and 20-158. Next.
20-152.
152 is to the Ward of the Streetscape Contract. Ward of Contract NJDOT MA 181920, West Allendale Avenue Streetscape Project Phases 1, 2, and 3, Zucaro Inc. We're happy to, we're awarding a contract for the downtown Streetscape project, utilizing the grant funds received from NJDOT to plant trees, improve lighting, replace pavers, trash receptacles on West Allendale Ave. Huge thanks to Ron and to Amy, as well as David Jusmeski of Neglia Engineering. Amy?
Our next big project. Pardon?
Yeah, anything you want to add to that?
No, no, looking forward to it. It's going to be a really beautiful improvement on our downtown and much needed. So I'm really looking forward to having a pre-con meeting and getting a great schedule going.
Great, thank you for all your work on that. 20-153, authorize advertisement and receipt of bids, 230 West Crescent Avenue Remediation Projects. Amy, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. So when we bought the property, we knew we had some contamination, as we've mentioned in prior meetings. There's a limited area that has some environmental constraints. It's located underneath the parking lot. The area has been IDed, it's been delineated, and now we are ready to take the steps to remediate so we can move forward as part of the transaction. And in addition, we applied for grants, so we're looking forward to following through with those grants, and then also applying for more grants.
Great, thank you. 20-154, authorize advertisement and receipt of bids, paving program 2020. Our borough engineer, Mike Freeland, put together bid specs for our annual paving program, and the streets that will be paved this year include the rest of Cambridge Drive and High Street. Next, 20-155, approve agreement recyclable materials recovery facility services, Rockland County Solid Waste Management Authority. Amy, again, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, so, you know, as we know, the recycling industry is market-driven, and since January 2018, the global market commodity pricing has just basically tanked, and it was disrupted by China not taking America's recycling anymore. We basically, for 30 years, were giving our recycling all to China. So unfortunately, America did not have the infrastructure in place, so a lot of these recycle companies, unfortunately, are going down. The market being also down is just compounded on this. So, you know, as Allendale continues to always promote sustainability, promote recycling, we just can't emphasize enough that we really need to start reusing bags, reusable bags, use containers instead of plastic water bottles, try to limit plastic as much as possible so we can weather through this as our country can try to get back on track and get our recycling back going again. And it's really unfortunate, just because, you know, we were doing so great in Allendale. We worked really well with Casella, the company that just went out, and they were giving us numbers. Allendale was up to almost, I think, 30% of the garbage was recycling, and she said that was like one of the highest towns. So our programs were working, and Allendale residents are great recyclers, but we're just in a little bit of a glitch right now. I'm sorry, Liz, did you say something?
I said, so it's important when they reduce, reuse, recycle, to reduce.
Yes, the reduce is the biggest part.
Concentrate on the first two Rs.
Plastics are just bad, bad, bad. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then the next two are somewhat in tandem, 20-156 and 20-157. 156 is to approve temporary modifying and relaxing application of Chapter 185, outdoor cafes in the borough of Allendale, COVID-19. As I mentioned earlier, businesses, and especially small businesses, have been hit tremendously hard by the pandemic with forced closures and loss of revenue. Tonight, the governing body will be approving this resolution, as well as Resolution 147, which I spoke about before, and Resolution 157, which is approving temporary extension and expansion of permissible temporary signage as a show of our support to the Allendale business community. These resolutions streamline the red tape, so to speak, and temporarily relax the borough's rules regarding outdoor cafe seating and temporary signage. On behalf of the governing body, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and hope for their collaboration with us. We truly hope that everyone will show their patronage and support to the businesses. So this was a lot of input from a lot of different people to make it right. Ray, thank you for guiding us through the process, and we appreciate that. And I know the businesses do, and I think the residents are going to come out and support, so appreciate for that. 157 is something that we had discussed two weeks ago. Improve temporary extension and expansion of permissible temporary signage in the borough of Allendale due to COVID-19, which permits the restaurants and establishments to put up signs regarding delivery and curbside pickup, hours of operation, change in hours of operation, change in days that they're opening, and also for signs in support of emergency personnel, like Allendale Strong and things like that. So that's what 2157 is about. On both of those ordinances, does any council member have anything that they wish to say? Okay, good. Next is, well, that's it, because the last one was 158, which Ray spoke of. So that's our consent agenda, that's the agenda review, and it brings us to discussion of the amendment to the noise ordinance. So Councilman Sasso, I think you requested that be put onto the agenda. Steve, are you there?
Seems as you may have dropped out, Mayor.
Yeah, because I don't see him, actually.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll continue, and if we have time in the work session, we'll put it on, or we can do it during the regular session. So let's go to council reports. Councilman O'Connell, would you like to give your report tonight?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you so much. OEM, we met, we actually had a meeting a week and a half ago. It was a shortened meeting. We didn't invite everyone. We're going to try and increase that next time for July 14th. But I just want to let everyone know, as things loosen up and restrictions loosen up, please still keep a safe distance, and please wear the masks at all times. As far as law and public safety, dispatch received 7,252 calls as of this afternoon, 657 911 calls, 54 fire department calls, and 175 AVAC calls. There's still no training going on for the police headquarters or the police officers. The junior police academy, they're going to try to get it running, provided it can be done safely within the regulations dictated by the state, and those dates are July 6th to the 10th. As everyone knows, this past Saturday, we had a visibility march, and I want to thank our Allendale Police Department and all of our volunteers, because this march took a lot of time and resources to pull together. They had good cooperation from the borough agencies from out of town, and everybody contributed. And this was put together not in weeks, it was a few days put together. Because as of the middle of the week, we didn't know what was going on as of yet. So I'd like to thank everybody, especially Mayor, Chief Sherb, and Ron Kistner for getting everything, and everything was done safely, so that was the biggest thing. And lastly, I'd like to wish Councilman O'Toole a happy birthday, and I'm done.
Great, thank you, Ed. Next. He's not, he'll be appropriately put on the hot seat when it's his turn. Councilman Homan, Councilwoman Homan, would you like to give your report?
Sure. First, I continue to be grateful, you know, I'm the second to Amy Wilsinski on the facilities committee, and obviously, there's just a lot that goes on, and she manages all the balls in the air with a lot of attention to detail, the Crestwood, the Trails Grant, Downtown Streetscape, and so much more. So just thank you, and thank you to Ron and his group and everybody that makes these things come together. The Water Committee, we continue to move forward on the PFAS treatment feasibility, and additional data's been provided to Matt McDonald, and we're just looking to have the best options available for us to evaluate to make sure we can see what's the best fit for Allendale of the future. And our team has also been looking at workflow for water outside of the Suez contract, and we're looking at whether or not some of those things that aren't included directly in the cost of the Suez contract, if there can be shared services with other municipalities, evaluating to see if there is value for everybody. Certainly, we know that connecting with other water utilities in Northwest Bergen is super important and needs to happen more, and this is a good subject to do it upon. Water is a valuable resource, and we want to make sure it's not taken for granted. And our next official committee meeting was scheduled for this Tuesday, June 16th, but this will be moved to Wednesday morning, June 17th. So there was just a conflict with the many other meetings that we have. Lastly, I'll just remind everybody again about the USRA Coalition, that in June, there's a Wellness and Motivation Program that's available online. I really encourage everybody to go to the USRA, that's Upper Saddle River Allendale Coalition. So they have both, and they can go to the Facebook page for that, and you can enter in either the student or the parent ID to be able to be a part of that presentation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Councilman Sasso, are you back on?
I'm back on. I'm sorry about that, Ed, technical problems, took me a minute to-
Not a problem at all. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to put two things on your plate. Why don't you, one, give us your council report, and two, during that, why don't you speak to the amendment of the noise ordinance, which you asked to be put in the work session? So why don't you cover both?
Sure, I'll do it really quickly. So the Land Use Committee had a special meeting this past Tuesday, two days ago, and out of that meeting came, on the consent agenda, 20-156. So, which is important for lots of reasons, getting back to the new normal, helping our residents and our merchants, so it's a good thing, and I'm glad we could do it for the next 90 days. On the noise amendment, I've been looking at this for a while, so this is probably my second or third tour, I think. I probably say this all the time, on the Land Use Committee, I like to focus on quality of life issues for our residents. You know, all of New Jersey residents are highly taxed, and Allendale's no different, so I've always felt that they deserve the best from me, and whatever we, as a committee, can do in terms of making their lives easier, construction code, or whatever we can do. So I've been speaking to a lot of people, and I think this issue is more in the forefront now because more people are at home, kids are at home, and I've gotten some information, solicited and unsolicited from residents, and I'm grateful for all of it, about their feelings about noise in the community. We are also learning through medical experts and science experts that more and more, the sounds that are coming into our lives can be detrimental, both physically, emotionally, and mentally. In fact, this new Apple Watch I've got warns me when I'm experiencing loud sounds. So to that end, we're talking about doing a few things to amend the noise amendment, amend the noise ordinance. One of those things, which I wanted to float out there to the council, is the possibility of shortening the hours, where you can create a lot of lawnmower, power tool, leaf blower noise. On one day a week, our Borough Council pointed out to me that Sunday would probably be the best day, since that's when, you know, the largest majority of people are not working. And I was thinking that maybe summer hours might be a good thing. So from, let's just say, June 1st to October 1st, no, you know, we'll have a list of what's not permissible, but the loudest kinds of things would be not permitted before 11:00 a.m., let's say, on a Sunday, and after 3:00 p.m., it would not be permitted on a Sunday, June 1st to October 1st. Now, the idea being that that time of year is when you get the most daylight, and I get that there are people that work six days a week, maybe seven, and they only have a limited amount of time to mow the lawn, or blow the leaves, or whatever they're going to do. But again, since during that period, you have a lot of daylight, and I think the demographic of folks that might be inconvenienced, greatly inconvenienced, I should say, on this is probably relatively small compared to those that would like to enjoy their own properties a little bit longer. That's the sort of it.
Steve, if I could just ask a question, we discussed it briefly on Tuesday, but it was a different agenda. So you're looking to reduce the hours that people can utilize machinery during the summer, right? You're looking to say not before 11:00 and not after 3:00?
On one day a week, Sunday.
But, so the expanded daylight hours really would be then of no moment, right? I mean, even if it was daylight 24 hours, right, there's more. So what's the tie-in between-
The expanded daylight you may be able to take advantage of during the other six days, for instance.
Yeah, and I know-
You can only, at four or five o'clock on a particular day, not a Sunday, you can cut the lawn, because it'll be light out up to the point you'd have to stop anyway, which I think is 7:00 o'clock.
Yeah, so, I mean, we discussed, I mean, I'm not in favor of reducing the hours for the summer. I mean, I think for a lot of people, Sunday is their one day that they can do it, so-
You still have four hours, 11 to 3:00, and you still have six other days a week.
Why doesn't it be effective if, at the committee level, a draft of the proposal as stated by the councilman is put together, and then the entire governing body could have something in front to discuss the parameters of what's being proposed?
Yeah, I think that's-
Yeah, that would be good. That would be helpful.
Right.
I agree.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes?
Mayor?
Yes.
We discussed this while I was on land use last year. How is this going to be enforced? That was an issue last year on land use.
The same way it's enforced now.
Which is how?
Police, construction code can do it, property maintenance can do it, or any borough official designated by the mayor and council.
Are they going to have devices to measure the noise, to see if it's-
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, Ed, because that's one other portion of the current noise ordinance that we're looking to amend. It's, as it stands today, it's difficult, if not impossible, to enforce. We're looking to remove the decibel levels and the need for a noise meter and somebody duly trained on that noise meter. We've looked at some other current ordinances, which anybody can look at, the Village of Ridgewood, Township of Wykoff, both have noise ordinances that are very common sense and simple, that basically, you know, allows somebody in the field, the police department or a borough official, to say, "That noise, whatever we're talking about, is unreasonable."
So it's 7:59, so I have a minute before we're going to have to break, or we're going to have to reopen in the regular session. So what I would suggest is, Steve, if you want to take it back to the committee, let us come to, let's discuss in the committee, come out with a working document, and then you can put it on the agenda to discuss with the full council.
You got it, thank you.
Great. Great, thank you. Okay, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to request a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved, Holman.
Great, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Aye.
End of the work session. Stay tuned.
Eight o'clock.
Okay, it is now eight o'clock, welcome back. The time is 8:00 PM and this is the June 11, 2020, regular session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and telephone conference. I ask at this time that you, uh, that the public please mute their phones so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two opportunities during this meeting for the public to speak. We will advise you at the appropriate times. Call to order, Open Public Meetings Act announcement. Uh, Michelle, if you could please read.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger.
Great, thank you. And if you could all please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which is standing, one nation, united, liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, if you could please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman, here. Councilwoman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Strouch?
Here.
Councilwoman Wolzinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
I'm here, thank you. Approval of minutes, this, I, May 14th, 2020, work and regular session minutes, I would request a motion to approve.
So moved, O'Connell.
Wait, hold on, hold on.
It's only the work session.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I misspoke, my apologies. Uh, we are approving just the work session, um, minutes from May 14th, 2020. So if I could, please get a motion to approve the May 14th work session minutes.
So moved, O'Connell.
Great, thank you, Ed, a second?
Second.
Great, thank you, Amy. Uh, Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wolzinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Public comment on agenda items only. So open the floor to the public for agenda items only. If anyone wishes to be heard on anything on the agenda.
Mayor Mark Savistano, 22 reading, please.
Hi, Mark, how are you tonight?
I'm very well, thank you. Discovered I have naturally curly hair. Was the, uh, discussion that Steve was just making a part of the agenda?
So regarding the noise, the noise ordinance?
Yes.
Ye- yes, it was on the work session, um, that, uh, Councilman Sasso asked that it be put on the work session for, for discussion, so it was listed.
Okay.
Just for clarity, it's not on the, uh, agenda for this meeting, so there's no action.
Right, but Mark, it's not on the agenda for a vote, it was not on the agenda for introduction or, or approval, it was just on for discussion purposes only.
May I comment on it or no?
Um, it, it's not, well.
Well, then I'll wait till the end of the session, I can comment on it then.
Yeah, and, and I'm just, if, if it's helpful, uh, Mark, this is Ray Wes, if it's, if it's helpful, um, the, the ultimate recommendation for this evening is that it's gonna go to committee and a work product will come out, which will then be vetted for discussion with something in hand for all to read. So that's, that's really where we are right now.
So, so Mark, I, I would say, so rather than discuss publicly, although I do appreciate and, and protocol, et cetera, but perhaps you can reach out to Councilman Sasso and give him your thoughts and then we, we still have to discuss it i- in committee and then it's gonna come out and, and, and there'll be a discussion. So if you don't mind proceeding that way, that's probably, I think, the, the preferred way.
Okay, I, I already had a discussion with Steve privately, I can just memorialize it in an email.
Great, wonderful.
I did have a question regarding, uh, something else that was on the work session agenda that Amy spoke about. Is it okay to speak about that?
Sure.
Okay, um, with regard to 20 dash 155, uh, are we changing our, uh, our collector? Amy?
So, um, Casella, who we used before, was kind of like the middleman between Rockland County, even though it wasn't like a, there were kind of, kind of like a service company, we weren't like, we didn't have a markup. When, why don't you say middleman, sometimes you think you have a markup. So we're actually now just going directly to Rockland County. So it's right, it, it's kind of right over the, um, off the highway on Hillburn, I, New York, I think it is. Um, anyway, we're, we're actually, you know, now taking our recycles there and instead of getting revenue for them, we actually have to wind up paying for them now to take them away, so. For the time being, we just have to grit and bear it until the recycling industry gets back on its feet.
It is, it is in Hillburn, by the way, it's right down from.
Hillburn, yeah, it's actually cool, yeah.
I took a tour of it. It's a brand new, virtually brand new facility.
Yeah, Casella was great, when they came in, they helped us out, they, um, they really gave us a lot of literature to educate the community, um, really gave us good tips on real, how to get recycling going and it, and it worked, so it's unfortunate to see that they have disbanded.
But there's no change to, uh, the collection?
Currently, no, but the end of the year might be a different story, but we're gonna stick a status quo until, until, uh, our contract runs out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you. Anyone else, uh, wish to be heard on agenda items only? Not seeing or hearing anyone, um, we'll bring it back. Uh, resolution, uh, tonight we'll be holding our public hearing for the Bergen County Open Space Grant Application, Crestwood Park Cross Country Trail Circuit Improvement Program. Uh, Amy, you, you've already spoken on that, so I don't know that you have anything else to, to speak to it.
No, you know, just, just that with everything, you know, this is something I think would be wonderful for Allendale, but obviously with our budgets and everything next year, you know, we'll have to evaluate it when, when the time comes, but right now we just thought we should still go forward with the process and, um, you know, it's, it's grant money, so it's, it's, you know, there, it is matching, but, um, it is, it is considerable amount of grant money as well, so we're just gonna go forward with it and, uh, we'll see what happens next year.
Great, thank you, Amy. So I'll open the floor to the public for, uh, comment on the grant application, if anyone wishes to be heard. Not seeing or hearing anyone, I close the floor to the public and, um, other council members for comments? Okay, not seeing any or hearing any, uh, I would move, um, to, uh, resolution 20 dash 141, uh, request a motion for resolution 20 dash 141, authorized submission of Bergen County Open Space Trust Fund Municipal Program Park Improvement Application, uh, Crestwood Park Trail Circuit Improvement Project. I would request a motion.
So moved, Amy Wolzinski.
Great, second?
Holman.
Thank you, Liz. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Sure.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolzinski?
Right, that's everyone? I- i- is the reason why it takes so long for Councilman O'Toole to respond is because the feed has to go all the way to, to Florida and back?
Could be, could be.
Could be. Um, ordinance, uh, 20 dash, ordinance for second reading and public hearing, 20 dash 10, an ordinance establishing chapter 181 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale entitled Short Term Rentals. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I haven't. Uh, this is an ordinance establishing chapter 181 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale entitled Short Term Rentals. It was, um, uh, published here with, um, the first and, uh, first read by title only on May 28, 2020.
Great.
And now I'll conduct the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, we need to.
Right, you're right, um, uh, public comment, any public comment on the ordinance? Hearing and seeing no one, requested council member to make a motion to move, to pass and adopt on the second and final reading ordinance 2010 and having notice of saying to be published according to law.
The land use committee, I'd like to offer it, please.
Great, a second?
Second, Strouch.
Great, thank you. Um, Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolzinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Michelle. Introduction of ordinances, 20 dash 11, uh, ordinance of the Borough of Allendale, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, amending the redevelopment plan for certain properties situated along West Crescent Avenue. I would request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance 20 dash 11 and set the hearing for June 25th, 2020 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
So moved, Wolzinski.
Great, thank you, Amy, second?
Holman.
Great, thank you, Liz. Uh, Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
Sure. This is ordinance 20 dash 11, an ordinance of the Borough of Allendale, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, amending the redevelopment plan for certain properties situated along West Crescent Avenue.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Oh, he's having technical, yeah, he's fuzzy.
Councilman Strouch?
Like this.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Councilwoman Wolzinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next is the consent agenda, which is 20 dash 142 through 20 dash 158, which I went over in the work session. I request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
O'Toole?
O'Toole, thank you, Matt, second?
Second.
O'Connell, Ed, thank you, Ed.
Strouch.
Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
Said yes, yes. Uh, and Councilwoman Wolzinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, any unfinished business? Any new business? Uh, committee report, so, um, Ed, when, Steve, when, Liz, when, Amy, you have not gone, is that correct?
I have not.
Okay, would you like to go now?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, okay, so as we mentioned, Crestwood Lake will be opening in just 10 days on June 20th, so we're really excited. Um, thanks so much to Ron and the DPW and Tom Biscardi, our lake director, um, for all of their work to, to make this happen. We have a great social distancing plan, people are super excited, revenue is actually coming in nicely. As we also mentioned, we extended our early bird rates for, um, our Allendale residents till June 20th, um, so, uh, we're really excited to open up and keep a lookout for the debut of our new Crestwood Lake family blankets that we'll be selling this year as well. We opened our tennis courts today, uh, still no playground, hopefully soon, and the celery farm, it will be opening on Monday. Our sports teams are starting to roll out, I believe it's, uh, June 22nd was, is going to be opening day, so we have our travel baseball teams, um, getting ready, they, they have submitted their social distancing plans, which have all been approved by our OEM as well as our camps, which start on July 6th, such as Alley Oop. Um, 20 to 20 to 30, this was, uh, quite a week to pull this all together and thank you, Liz, for your kind words, but everybody knows there is no I in team and there is no possible way I could have done this without you, without Mayor Meredith, Vince Barra and of course Ray, who's, uh, keeps us, uh, in line all the time. So, um, it was a, it was a very intense week, but we got through it. It's the best thing for Allendale, we're still can, you know, convinced and, um, I'm just really looking forward to getting this project, um, off the ground. As Ed mentioned, I'm very happy that the visibility march went, was very peaceful. I want to say thank you to our DPW, our Allendale Police, our CERT and all the additional law enforcement offices that were, uh, called in to help keep the march organized and safe for our residents. So, uh, that is it for me.
Great, great. Um, do you want to give you, your report? Jim?
Oh, okay, I thought you were gonna do Matt first. Okay.
Saving the birthday boy for last.
I like that. DPW Committee, uh, you know, I, I have to start by yet again thanking Ron and his team, um, which is, you know, not just the field workers, DPW workers, but the office staff. Um, you know, I mean, they have been working hard and diligently and they just keep raising the bar and amazing me. Um, the most recent being the opening of the recycling center or the, by the reopening of the recycling center, um, the, the preparations of Crestwood Lake that Amy mentioned, but there's even more preparations that they have to take care of, uh, to screen the guardhouse, uh, for current COVID safety requirements, uh, and of course the Borough Hall, which is, uh, preparing to reopen, um, it has, has, uh, the curtains and, and plexiglass shields that have to be installed and, um, you know, all of this needs to be taken care of. Um, and this is all in addition to the normal operations of the borough, the, the paving program that, uh, you mentioned, uh, Mayor Bernstein, that you mentioned earlier, uh, in the work session, um, and, uh, you know, the, the compost permits, the construction permits, everything that is still going on, uh, it's just an amazing Herculean task and I can't thank Ron and the team enough. With that said, um, and, and while we're talking about paving, um, the county has indicated that Hillside, a portion of Hillside have, will be paved or should be paved this year, and it is on the list, just waiting for federal funding, which we hope comes through. Uh, all the ADA ramps have been done and Allendale's work is done, we're not the holdup, uh, the, the federal funding is currently the, the holdup. With the, with the planned opening for Crestwood Lake on June 20th and the releasing of some of the COVID, uh, safety requirements, the Allendale Volunteer Goose Patrol was able to perform modified field tests this year. Uh, they only tested new applicants, whether it's a new dog or a new handler, if it was new this year, it had to be tested. Those tests were performed on Tuesday evening and all of the applicants passed. Uh, a couple applicants, uh, had actually withdrawn prior to the test as they were concerned that their dogs weren't quite ready yet.
They thought the test was too hard. It's an elite group, our goose patrol, I have to say.
I, I'm, I'm very pleased, uh, you know, this patrol in the 22 years that it's been in existence has, you know, grown from an ad hoc group of concerned citizens who wanted to improve the health quality of Crestwood, the fields around it, as well as the sports fields throughout town, including Northern Highlands. And, uh, it, it, with the, with the council's blessing and creation of the Goose Patrol Committee, uh, it, it's really taking it to the next level. And one of the first things that the committee did on its second year of existence was the decision to bring in professional trainers to oversee the actual evaluation of the field to oversee the actual evaluation of the field test with the Goose Patrol Committee acting as support players. And it really has been working out great, and it's helped the Goose Patrol to enter the next level. I also want to touch upon the Recycling Advisory Committee, Mark Savistano, Ed O'Connell, and we have our most recent addition to the committee, Carlton Frost. Carlton Frost is a retired school teacher. He is still tutoring from sixth grade to postgraduate, and he's an avid, he's also a member of the Goose Patrol Committee, and he walks his dog there daily. And he brings, in addition to extra poop bags, he brings a couple extra shopping bags that he fills up with garbage and throws away. And he's been discussing with me ways of improving the ability for residents to easily dispose of recycling while at Crestwood Parks. And I told him about the advisory committee, and he requested, or he asked that he, you know, join his enthusiasm. And when I discussed it with Mark and Ed, they welcomed his enthusiasm and participation. So we're looking forward to that. Mark Savistano is going to speak at the end of the meeting during the public portion and give an update on what he's been doing over the past two weeks. And I just want to thank Mark again in advance. I did speak with Mark prior to this meeting, and I did speak with Ed O'Connell prior to this meeting. And I'm pleased with the progress that Mark has made on the styrofoam portion of potentially adding that to our recycling program. And we're going to start looking at funding possibilities, grant applications in the weeks to come. And I hope to have more for the council at the next meeting. And with that, Ari, I'll end my report for tonight.
Great, thank you very much, Jim. And now, without further ado, the birthday boy live from Florida. Appreciate the dedication of dialing in from Florida. We know you're older, and let's see if you're wiser.
Well, I was told that I shouldn't be at Borough Hall, so I got as far away from Borough Hall as I could. So the Administration Finance and HR Committee met last week via telephone. We had an excellent conversation regarding the impending open Crestwood and the financial aspects of that. So I thank Councilwoman Wosinski for her time and putting up with all my questions, both before the meeting and during. We also discussed our current finances, as well as the financial forecasts. Corona's definitely having an impact on everything, but we'll work to keep the impact to a minimum by keeping an eye on all of our expenses. Revenues are indeed down, but we're in the same boat that all of our neighbors and probably everybody else in the country is going to be in. So we're keeping an eye on things. That's all I've got for this evening.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt, your excuse, go play, go have a good birthday.
Oh, we're done here, right?
With that, I will give, everyone's given their report, I will give my mayor's report. I will try to keep it brief. On Sunday, as several council members have referenced, on Sunday, Allendale was the setting for an organized march through town. This event was not organized by the borough. This event provided for a peaceful venue for our residents and those from surrounding communities to come together to advocate for racial sensitivity. Thank you to the Police Department, Fire Department, CERT, and Ambulance Corps for providing support and ensuring a safe experience for all who attended. COVID-19 update, you can tell by the Governor Murphy's recent executive orders, et cetera, things are opening up and the numbers are down. I think our number, Ron, I think our number yesterday was 68?
68, yes.
68, yeah, we have been, we perked that, but we have been on the lower side. So I commend Allendale, I've spoken to many, many residents, and I commend everyone for doing the right thing. Yesterday at our OEM meeting, it was reported that there are no active cases of the coronavirus at the community for senior living, which is definitely good news. The stay-at-home order has been lifted, effective immediately, outdoor gatherings of up to 100 people and indoor gatherings of up to 25% of the capacity or up to 50 people, whichever is fewer, is permitted. First Amendment protests and religious gatherings may exceed the gathering limitation. Parking at state parks and forests is reopened to full capacity. County and municipal parks are permitted to do the same. I'm happy to announce, and I, some certain people, residents have reached out to me, the celery farm will be reopening on Monday, June 15th, so that's good news for a lot of people. The governor has announced opening upcoming changes to restrictions pertaining to businesses, effective June 15th, which is Monday, outdoor dining at restaurants can begin, as well as non-essential in-person retail can open to 50%. Childcare centers may also reopen too. Childcare daycare centers, effective June 22nd, a week following. Salons and barber shops can open, I know there's a lot of, so we're happy for that. So overall, excited, and I think we all are an optimistic that downtown Allendale will begin to see more activity with these changes. Also, on June 22nd, outdoor gatherings may increase to 250 people. On June 29th, motor vehicle will reopen to perform services that cannot be performed online, such as the titling of new cars. Road tests will be given by appointment, and those with appointments that had to be canceled will be receiving letters as to how to reschedule. June 30th, high school sports can resume under protocols issued by the New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletic Association. On July 3rd, outdoor gathering limits increased to 500 people. July 6th, graduation ceremonies can begin under the 500-person outdoor gathering limit, and youth day camps may reopen while adhering to guidelines. Indoor dining, playgrounds, gyms, libraries, museums, some government offices, including our Borough Hall, amusement parks, arcades, casinos, water parks, and indoor malls remain closed to the public. I want to remind everyone that while the restrictions are easing, everyone should continue to practice social distancing guidelines that are still in place, and face coverings are still required. Tuesday, June 16th, is late night voter registration at Borough Hall. There will be a contactless system set up outside of Borough Hall until 9:00 p.m. that evening to accommodate those wishing to register. Governor Murphy, and I've discussed this in the past, has moved the primary election to July 7th with mostly vote-by-mail process. Primary ballots for registered Republicans and Democrats are starting to automatically be delivered. Unregistered voters will be mailed a vote-by-mail application, which will need to be returned to receive the actual ballot. If you have any questions, you can call Borough Hall. Lastly, I've repeated the 2020 census, we're creeping up, but we're not there. We were at 75, we were at 76, we're at 77. It's underway, our response is 77%. So that's 23% that aren't doing it. Please take a few moments to respond. I've said over repeatedly, it's important that we get counted. It's important to us financially that we get counted. The numbers count. And census workers will begin contacting those who have not responded around late July. And that is it for my mayor's report. Ray, would you like to give your report?
Very briefly, Mayor Wally, very, very busy, two weeks since our last meeting. Most of the matters that we've been involved in are either reflected in the resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda or have been referred to in the committee reports of the governing body. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michelle?
I actually do.
Okay.
So today I spoke with the Bergen County Board of Elections, and they have set up bins, secure bins, where if people, I guess there has been some issues with mailing back of ballots recently in some elections. So they've set up these bins where the voter can just, you know, deposit them, and they are going every day to pick them up. So we can get that list up on the website.
Great, that'd be great, thank you. Lissa is not here, and she's not dialed in, correct? Right, so no report from Lissa, Ron, would you like to give your report?
Real quick, I just want to thank all the Borough employees here at Borough Hall and the DPW for their cooperation. As Stan mentioned in a couple of the council reports, we are putting up Plexiglas and shower curtains, and we got hand sanitizers, and we got, we do have a washable mask coming hopefully tomorrow or by Monday. All the employees will get three of them, and they should get them for the year. Blue with white and red Allendale insignia on it, very nice. So we are moving on, but everyone's really cooperating, it's made my life a little easier. Trying to juggle a lot of faults this time, so just want to thank everybody for that.
I second that thanks, but I want to thank you. What you have on your plate and on your shoulders, what you get done in a day, in a week, is astounding. No exaggeration, you and I start communicating at 6:30 in the morning and sometimes finish at 10:30 at night. So in Allendale, it just, from all of us, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Last time to open the meeting to the public, anyone wish?
Before you open it, Ari?
Yes.
If I could do a quick amendment to my DPW report. I mistakenly said that the county paving of Hillside, the portion of Hillside Ave from basically West Crescent up to Just Past Forest, I indicated it was waiting for federal funding, that was a mistake. The funding is coming from the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
And then Ari, I do see Lissa's listed as being on, so it seems like her, so she's present. I think she just is not able to.
Okay. So thank you for clarifying, and I don't know, Lissa, if you're there and you want to give a report? Okay. I will open the meeting to the public, anyone wish to be heard?
Hi, it's Jackie McSwiggan, 7D Greenway in Allendale. I just would like to send a huge shout out and thanks to Ron Kistner and Lane, and to the Executive Administrator Patty Durso of the library for their wonderful work in trying to get the library restarted. I think a constant contact went out announcing that the book drop is open. We had 8,000 items out over these past couple of months. And so the book drop is open, the items will be quarantined for 72 hours before they're reprocessed and put back, you know, on the shelves. We are also, the library is a task force, and we're also working on developing a plan for pickup when we are able to, when the governor gives us the go-ahead to start gradually opening up the library and starting circulation of books. So we're going to call it, I think it's going to be called porch pickup, but we are planning to be able to have residents order books just from the Allendale collection at this point, or when we're able to open. We're not going to be able to get books from other libraries, but right now, we're working on that. So there are a lot of people doing great work, but Ron and his team were wonderful. So patient, came in, got Plexiglas going, got all of the, you know, all the PPE stuff that we needed. So I just wanted to thank him on behalf of the library board.
Great, thank you, Jackie, and thank you, I mean, I'm part of that, and I see your emails and your texts, et cetera. And yeah, you've been doing a yeoman's task, and most, most appreciated, it has not been easy. And I know, because I've been on those Zoom meetings, there's a lot, there's complexity there, and you couldn't have greater people at the helm. So for you, for Catherine Shaw, for Patty Durso, for the whole board, thank you. And I'm only acknowledging 27 of those 8,000 books that are, that are.
I had the other 7,000 something, Ari, don't worry.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening again, Mayor Mark Savistano, 22 Vreeland Place. Before I talk about the recycling, I just want to mention the march, and thankful to the organizers of that march. And without taking away from the necessity of it, I want to thank the police department that I know through professional and personal contact, never to act in a way that we need to be concerned or embarrassed. They do an excellent job, and I'm very thankful to be part of a community with a police department like we have in Allendale. With regard to the recycling of styrofoam, I did make a trip to Polymolding in Haskell, and I had an excellent conversation with one of the managers there. And understanding that it's an item that is not going to bring any value, per se, to our recycling efforts, except, well, I should say economically, it certainly will bring a value ecologically. And we are continuing to look at other municipalities. I contacted eight surrounding municipalities and spoke to their DPW representatives, and it was interesting, the differences and the opinions, but the most important thing that I found is that we're behind in our efforts, and I'm hoping to push that forward along with Jim and the other members of the advisory committee. Glen Rock is holding an event four times this year to collect styrofoam, and we're going to try and work that into our model to at least kickstart our efforts, so that this can be part of our recycling in Allendale. Look forward to, we're working with the newest member as well. And thank you, Jim.
Great, Mark, thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hey, Ari, before we close, just that, I think what Lissa had wanted to get out was just that the estimated tax bills will be being sent out next week. So that's something just for people to be aware of, if you're flicking through your mail, that's something you want to focus on.
Great, thank you, Liz, thank you for conveying that. Most appreciated. Okay, anyone else, not seeing or hearing anyone else? I would request a motion to adjourn the regular session.
So moved.
So moved, Stroch.
Second, okay, so Liz and then Jim for a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much, everyone.
Happy birthday, Matt.